Thursday, August 28th, Planning Commission meeting. So as Shelley went through, we're gonna, we have cards out there for providing public testimony. Rule call, District One, Jason, we never been here, but late, sorry. David.
Here.
Jason is absent, Dave is apparent, Jacob.
Present.
Rich.
You're.
Tara's absent, and Joe. No wonder you need me. We'll start the pledge of allegiance now.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so I have some cards here already. So our agenda item number one is to consider a request for a conditional use permit submitted by Josh and Angie Heckman, Sartell, Minnesota, according to Sections 4.8, 6.3.2, and 9.7.5A of Sterns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, to locate a detached accessory dwelling unit on a parcel in the R5 zoning district. The proposed project is located on Lot 1, Block 1 of North North Angle?
North Angle.
North Angle Estates, lying north of 40th Street North in Section 31 of Brockway Township. The property address is 2283 40th Street North, Sartell, Minnesota. Members who visited, I did, David.
Yes, I did.
Jacob.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
And Joe.
Yes.
Staff report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the request before you is to add a second home on this property, also called an accessory dwelling unit. It's in a residential zoning district, so therefore, and it's gonna be detached from the home. So the ordinance requires a conditional use permit for a detached accessory dwelling unit in a residential zoning district. So the new home and the maximum size allowed under the ordinance is 1,000 square feet. So the new home will meet that requirement. It will be located just to the east of the current home. They do plan on installing a new driveway for this, they're gonna build a shed and then the second home. So they're installing a new driveway off of 40th Street, and they do have a permit from the township for that. As you can see, the property is half wooded, and then the north half of the property is open grassland. So they're working on getting trees removed for the new buildings. The new home will be 984 square feet, they are gonna have like an open porch on the north sides, and that doesn't count towards their square footage. All setbacks will be met. The, on the, in the county's comprehensive plan, this is in a ag rural area on the future land use map. Other than that, the condition that we would propose if it's recommended for approval is simply that the property owner shall continue to live in one of the residential dwellings. And I did receive one letter when we get to the public hearing.
Angie Heckman, 2283 40th Street North in Sartell.
Joshua Heckman, 228 40th Street, Sartell.
Do you have anything to add to the staff report?
No, she was very thorough about all of what we're gonna do with it, or where it's gonna go. Do you need to know why we want it?
No.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you can add if you want to, but it's not needed.
Well, the reason we just don't do like an addition onto our home for it, and that needs to be separate, is because the whole purpose of it is for a, like elderly parents, and they need it to be on one level. So being, like where we're situated with our, like sewer and all that kind of thing, we can't just like add on something that would be only on one level for them, so. And well, and we were building the shed anyway, we were gonna just have a little living space in there, and through this whole process, we learned that we cannot do that. So, so that's why it's separate.
Perfect, thank you for coming in beforehand. Alright, we'll open the public hearing. I have two comment cards, do we have any other comment cards?
Those are for the next item.
Oh, do we have any comment cards for this item?
Just the one letter.
And direct the question to me, please.
Hi, I'm Sheena Black. My name is Sheena Black, and the question that we have is more so about splitting the lot, and it, from what I'm hearing, it doesn't sound like that is something that's happening. And I think the concern is, you know, just setting a precedence that we would do that in the future, and some, you know, it's a large lot in neighborhood, and that if people started splitting them off, and it becomes more, you know, quarter acre lots or something, and so we just wanted to ask that question, if that was part of the plan.
Okay, we'll have staff address that after, once we're done, okay?
Sure, yeah, I can address that question. They're not proposing to split the property, and due to the current zoning of R5, and it's, the property is just under five acres, they wouldn't be able to split it anyway unless a rezoning were to occur. So yeah, the plan right now is not to do a land split.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Do you want me to read this letter?
Please.
Sure. So we received one letter from Joe and Tracy Schulte, they live on Moonlight Lane, just to the east. So this letter is in strong support of the proposed ADU. We lived down the hill from the property for 19 years, we purchased one of the lots in Brockway Hollow, and the Heckman's lot, as well as those in Brockway Hollow are adequate size for country homes, being four and five acres, the acreage allows for additional outbuildings and the freedom to live by and large as we pleased. We're blessed to have such beautiful properties, it's for these reasons we believe the Heckmans should be allowed to share this blessing. Many other cultures and societies support multi-generational living, some within the same dwelling. Multi-generational living addresses the concern with rising cost of homeownership, the opportunity to provide elder living with dignity, near family support, as well as call to honor our parents by providing them independent living as long as they're able. The Heckmans have maintained a high standard of living, and we anticipate this will only be a wonderful addition to a beautiful country home.
Alright, thank you. Finally, any further comments from the public? Hearing none, I open it up for the commission questions. For staff or the applicant. Any questions? Final call for questions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close.
So moved, so you have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any further discussion upon this? Hearing none, I will work through the findings of fact. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I would say that it is. Living, accessory dwellings of this size are allowed.
Thank you. Does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? Please list applicable sections for or against.
Chair, I would support that as well. Particularly living pillar goal, support housing options that give people in all life stages and of all economic means viable choices for safe, stable, affordable homes. And then encourages new homes to be constructed in a sustainable manner, while including energy efficient technology in accordance with state building codes.
Alright, thank you. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I'd say it's compatible with the surrounding area. It's a residential structure, and because of the size of the lots being anywhere from four to five acres, there is plenty of buffering between the buildings.
Perfect, thank you. Has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance shall be satisfied? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I would say they have, they got a permit for the approach for this addition, so they have complied with the requirements, I believe.
And I'll also add, we do have the condition, should it be added to the motion, that that will also comply with the ordinance. So thank you. Are there any other issues pertinent to this matter, as indicated on the screen or in your packets?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question.
Yeah, Joe.
What about the drain field on, for the second dwelling? Typically, we have it on the diagram, I didn't see it on the diagram, unless I missed it.
Right, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, that's not been, the design hasn't been finalized yet. The septic inspector or designer has been out there and done the preliminary soils work, but we don't have the full design yet. So if the CUP passes, then they'll need to get that septic design in before we'll issue the construction permit for the home. Do you know, it's going to the north, right?
Yes.
Yeah, right to the north of the house.
But you more or less have an idea where it's gonna go, and you do have space for it.
Yeah, it's more towards the center of the, oh, sorry. Yeah, it's more towards the center of the lot, where they did the soil testing, it's, you can kind of see where the tree line is, there's a road that goes there, and it's just right next to that road is where that septic system and the drain field will go.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you so much.
Alright, so just for the commission members, the county board has asked that I start voting on the matter, so I'll join you as a voting member moving forwards. So I will entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Just a question. Do we add a second recommendation that the septic is approved?
Or is it an automatic?
It will be taken care of with the construction site.
Yeah, they won't be allowed to start without that, yeah.
Was there a motion there, or?
No, I did not make a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I will make a motion that we approve this conditional use permit.
Friendly amendment with the condition?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, with the condition, where did that go? What was that condition?
The property. The property owner shall continue to live in one of the residential dwellings.
Yes, yes.
All second.
Motion amended, motion made, amended, and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This will be before the county board, eventually. September 9th, 2025. Alright, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're gonna have agenda item number two, with the interim use permit for Dave Gerard's construction. If you have additional comment cards, please feel, please raise your hand. I have two of them here, so we'll take them during the public hearing. So, agenda item number two, to consider an interim use permit request submitted by Dave Gerard's construction.
Garrett's?
Garrett's? Man. Dave Garrett's Construction, on behalf of Dave and Darlene Garrett's in Freeport, Minnesota, according to Sections 4.18, 7.17, and 9.3.6F of Sterns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439. Their request is to conduct a mining operation on eight acres until December 31st of 2025. Their request is to conduct a mining operation on eight acres until December 31st of 2030. The property is in the Agricultural Forty, A40 zoning district. The property is the north of 28 years of government Lot One, lying south of 430th Street and west of 248th Street Avenue in Section 7 of Crane Township. The adjacent property address is 42837-248, uh, 248th Avenue of Freeport, Minnesota. Um, I'll do a visit of the, of the site, who visited? I did. I also met the applicant, just real briefly. He was like, why are you out here? Dave?
I did visit, talked to no one.
Jacob?
I did, nobody wants to talk to me, it's nothing new.
Rich.
I, I visited, drove around in the petty area.
Okay, and Joe?
Yes, I was there.
All right, staff report.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, this is a twenty-acre parcel, and the request is to mine on about approximately eight acres of it. It would be the eastern eight acres. The property owner also owns the lot to the south. That's where his home and business operation is located. Let's see, so it's in the A40 zoning district, which allows gravel mining. There's no wetlands within the proposed mining area. Let's see here. So the access road, they'll use their existing driveway into their home site for access to this mining operation. They, the ordinance does require that truck hauling signs be posted when they're hauling out of there. Since this is coming off of a township road, we typically require that they obtain a written agreement with Crane Township regarding the maintenance of 248th Avenue. So, um, he's been in touch with the township, and they actually meet tonight, so he's gonna buzz up to their meeting after this. Uh, as far as a screening barrier, so the plan sheet number two shows a berm going around the, the proposed gravel pit. So the applicant's plans are to build that berm as he strips the top soil. There won't be a berm on the south side, that's why I Xed that out, because his business is right there, and there's actually a nice stand of trees there as well. Let's see, so setbacks are all met, as far as, um, for mining and for processing. Setbacks are met to roads, um, property lines, and neighboring homes. For hours of operation, uh, he's requesting 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Typically, we prohibit Sundays and federal holidays. Uh, the access roads, uh, shall be paved or otherwise maintained to control dust. So the application states that they'll use a dust suppressant when needed. And then, as far as signage goes, we do require an informational sign right at the entrance that would state the, um, nit, property owner's name. I'm sorry, the, the, yeah, it'd be the property owner's name in this case, and phone number. And the end-use plan would be to return it to, um, just grade the side slope gradual and return it to farmland, is the end-use plan. On the comprehensive plan, future land use map, it's in an ag and rural area. That's the future land use goal for the area plan, is to maintain it in ag and rural. So, the proposed conditions, yeah, you can see on the photos there, the driveway that goes into the pit, proposed pit area. Uh, proposed conditions, so Dave is requesting it to be a five-year permit, so that would be expiring on December 31st of 2030. Set the hours of operation, um, require the financial guarantee. At your last meeting, I think it was, or a recent meeting, you discussed financial guarantees for gravel pits, and had recommended increasing the amount required to $6,500 per acre. So on eight acres, that would be $52,000 guaranteed, either a bond, letter of credit, to ensure that the site does get properly reclaimed when all said and done. Truck hauling signs be posted during times of hauling. Post the informational side, at, sign at the gravel pit entrance. Make sure there's a gate at the entrance. A written agreement with Crane Township shall be submitted, which may include a submittal of a financial guarantee to the township if they choose, and submit that before starting mining on the property. And then lastly, it's just a condition that all standards contained in Sections 7.17 of the zoning ordinance need to be met. That's all I have.
All right, applicant, please state your name and address.
Uh, Dave Garrett, 42837, 248th Avenue, Freeport.
Thank you. Anything to add to the staff report?
Huh?
Do you have any comments or to add to the staff report?
No.
All right. Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. So we have two comments. Uh, if there are other ones, please feel free to bring them forwards. Dan Sauer. Please state your name and address, and direct comments or questions to me.
Dan Sauer, 24779-430th Street. So, a couple of comments, and Dave's done a real good job with the berm, the screening. I mean, he keeps the pit real orderly, all the rocks are piled up nice. I just, the dust suppressant, um, I'd like to see that maybe put down if the road gets beat up a little bit more often than it has been put down. But other than that, he, he, he does a good job operating the pit, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Those are my things, yep.
And then Christina Hiltner. And again, name and address, and then direct comments to me.
Christina Hiltner, 42543, 248th Avenue, Freeport, Minnesota. So, you know, we live about a quarter of a mile from the site, and we have experienced a lot of noise and dust and traffic, traffic from this, from this pit, which, by the way, has not been permitted for the last ten years that it has been operating. And we have a lot of, we have numerous issues regarding the pit, and uh, basically, a breakdown of the, some of our main concerns are the potential effect to groundwater and surface water. Any effective dust suppressant techniques at the facility and on roadways generally involves using large amounts of water mist suppression, which has the potential to impact local groundwater and surface water levels. Number two, quarrying can disrupt groundwater flow paths and potentially contaminate water resources with runoff containing sediments and other pollutants. Number three, erosion and sedimentation. Land disturbance and removal of vegetation can lead to soil erosion and sedimentation impacting surrounding areas. Number four, regarding roads and transportation, I guess this is our biggest concern, is the roads and transportation. The increased heavy truck traffic from quarry and rock-crushing facility will have significant effects on any dirt roads leading to and from the site. What are the increased costs of maintaining this road? Number five, some farmers in this area that do not own land directly on 248th Avenue, or 430th Street, or Highway 17, they were not contacted about this. Only people within a quarter mile were contacted about this meeting. And people farther out from that are significantly, um, impacted by this traffic. And they weren't even notified of this meeting, but even if they were, they would have a difficult time getting here, as it's over thirty miles, and they're farming right now. Soil disturbance, disturbance and contamination from quarrying activities can degrade the surrounding farmland, potentially affecting crop yields and soil quality. Although the impact of this site may seem small at this time, like it's only eight acres, what's, what's it going to evolve to? What can it evolve to? And we know there aren't any blasting techniques going on at this time, and some of the things that are referenced in my further, um, impact statement, they're not happening now, but what is the potential for them to happen in the future? Can this site be expanded? Can these techniques be used in the future? Quarry and rock-crushing operations can create a stressful environment for wildlife and farm animals, and for the, the neighbors. And we are very out in the country, and we think like, oh, this isn't gonna impact very many people. But for the people who live across the street, it's a big impact. When I see forty or more gravel trucks go by in a day, that's, that's a big impact to me. If I were to try to sell our, uh, we have three parcels of land. Two of them are buildable and sellable. If I were to have somebody there on a good day to look at that property, and they see forty trucks go by, it is going to impact the sale and the potential value, property value of these properties. So, I know everybody needs gravel, everybody needs new roads, everybody needs landfills, everybody needs recycling centers. But do you want one next door to your house? That's the question I ask. I have a further, um, report on environmental impacts that I would like to give to you, and you can peruse at your own, your own time.
Let's have staff take it. And we'll add it to the record.
Written comments. For the written record. So the person, just for the record, the person that indicated it, it, their property is south of this, um, of the pit site, and indicated it on the map. That's so I can make sure I put it in the record.
All right, thank you. Jennifer, do we have any other public testimony letters or anything?
No, nothing else.
Okay.
Christine, I can take that.
Mr. Grad, would you like to respond to any of the comments you have heard?
Yes, um, there's occasionally, we haul maybe a couple of days out of there, but there's no forty trucks that go through there. And there's a lot of boats and go through there. There's a lake off towards the, uh, east there. And there's farmers that go through there occasionally. Farmers go through there occasionally with their tractors constantly too. So, that's.
Okay, thank you. Uh, comments from the, uh, planning commission members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Joe?
Mr. Dave, I got a couple of questions. Just as far as the number of trucks, how many trucks are really coming through there?
I have four trucks, yeah.
And are you usually doing construction, local construction projects, delivering materials for them?
Yeah, we all fill for site, uh, building sites or here and there, or put culverts, and we get clean fill for that, and.
So typically, what would you say, number of trucks per day and per week?
Uh, like now, and maybe it's like ten trucks, uh, for a week. I mean, occasionally, once in a while, we gotta haul and fill, and we're probably hauling for a day or two.
And then, when I was out there, I noticed that, you know, the accumulation of concrete, you know, with the weed bar that you got out there. And then eventually, you, you crushing that?
Yes.
Okay. How often is, is, would that take? Have you, have you done that in the past?
No, never did yet.
What, what would be the plan then, as far as getting that done?
Well, we get some more concrete there, I was gonna hire a crusher to crush it and stockpile it.
Yeah, and, and, and you should take it as convenient and economical as possible, but obviously, having to be done should be done.
Right.
Are you thinking like, once a year, or maybe every couple of years, or twice a year?
Maybe next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So a question for staff on the, on the dust control, on the access roads. Where are, what, what is the outer perimeter of the access road? So they got the driveway leading to the site, and then is the access road the road that's just adjacent to that, or does it extend further?
Well, that is a great question. A little bit subjective, I would say. I mean, 248th is the access road. Dave said the majority of the time, he goes south to 17, but once in a while, he'll go up north on 430th, and then out to the county road that's to the west. So.
So every year, they always put dust suppressant on the township, as in we, there's three, well, Jim, Tina, they, we pay a portion of putting the dust control in other neighbor, on the, on our, probably just like 300 feet.
Okay.
So that would be something that would be discussed with the township in terms of, um, who's responsible for putting that down, and who pays for it, and then also wear and tear on the road, you know, who, what, what the, kind, what the, um, gravel pit operator needs to take care of, and, and what the township will take care of. So, you know, and if we were to receive complaints that it's extremely dusty, we would definitely call up the, the landowner and let him know that there needs to be something put down. So, i- in the past, I recall one permit where there was a home really close by with no tree coverage or anything, it was wide open, and the planning commission specified the dust control had to be at least past that driveway. You know, I don't know if that applies, it makes sense here or not, but that's the only time we've gotten into specifics about the distance for the dust suppressant.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the board? Questions from the board? Final time, questions from the board? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to close?
I'll make a motion, close.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hopefully no? Okay, motion to yes.
Mr. Chair, did you want me to address a couple of the comments she had?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, a couple of notes I made, um, there was a question about if it could be expanded beyond the eight acres. If he did want to do anything more than what's on the map right now, he'd have to come back for another request. Likewise, if the five years comes up, and he still has material to take out of there, he'd have to come back and request a new permit. Another thing that was brought up was waters, uh, groundwater. So the plan right now is not to mine into the water table. So where the floor of the pit is right now, Dave estimated the water table is about ten feet lower than that. And he's, so he's not planning on mining into the water table. That was an issue, or concern. Erosion and sediment control, um, Dave indicated he plans to grade the site so that it will drain down towards the base of the pit, so there wouldn't be erosion outside of the pit boundary. That was all the notes that I made. Did you have anything else, Shelley?
Mr. Chair, just for the sake of everyone understanding, public notice process is for conditional use permits, a quarter mile, that is the statute. If we make sure that there's a minimum of ten, and then usually there's, you know, ten to twelve, depending on how rural we are. Uh, but we have to have a minimum of ten, so, um, while we recognize that's not always gonna notify everybody who's impacted, neighborhood conversations certainly bring people forward, and it's always, no objection to anybody coming or writing a letter, or however they find out is fine. But that is the minimum requirement, and that's what we, we haven't, uh, explored any options of, of changing that yet.
And notice is also put in the local paper?
Correct.
Here.
Yes, Joe.
So that we have a min, so we have a quarter mile and a minimum of ten?
Yes.
So that, so that if there isn't, if there's three within the quarter mile, then?
We keep going. Yep, we've had, we've had some where we've gone out quite a ways, when it's like an ag. Ashley Township, conditional use permit, we're grasping pretty far.
So that's good to hear.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, I have one more question.
Okay. Okay.